Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, our Tuesday, April 20th, 6:30 PM meeting. We have the invocation by Don Ash.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity, God, another chance to give your name praise, honor, and glory. Father, as we start this meeting, God, we take a second to recognize and realize and remember the life of Pastor Easterwood, who served this community and served this department as a chaplain at Henry County PD. God, we recognize your words that absent from the body is present for the Lord. What we ask you to be with this family, to be with this family throughout this time. And Lord, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting as we endeavor to do your will and a service to the people of this great community. We give you all praise, honor, and glory in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you. We'll now have our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the report for which it stands, one nation, under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Stephanie, we have a proclamation for the week of April 18th through the 24th as Crime Victims Rights Week.
Yes, ma'am, I would like to read the proclamation into the record for National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 18th through the 24th, 2021. Whereas being a victim of crime and navigating the criminal justice system can be a frightening and confusing experience, and whereas progress in improving the treatment of crime victims has been made through the efforts of thousands of victims and survivors who have turned their own experiences into a force for positive changes, ensuring that others can receive justice, meaningful assistance, and compassionate treatment. Whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act of 1984 and through the dedicated work of advocates, lawmakers, and victim services providers, there is a growing array of services and resources available to victims and their loved ones. Whereas the Henry County District Attorney's Office and Henry County Solicitor's Office have both established victim services departments within their agencies and expanded their outreach to victims, witnesses, and survivors, including hiring advocates who specialize in crimes against children, domestic violence, and juvenile crime. Whereas victim advocates, prosecutors, investigators, and staff are working together to honor the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness and respect, while meeting their needs to generate trust, compassion, and understanding, not only in the criminal justice system, but in their communities. Whereas these dedicated professionals are severing all victims of crime, especially those from groups that often have less access to healing services and avenues to justice. Whereas the National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit, ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. Whereas the Henry County District Attorney, the Henry County Solicitor General and their offices, as well as law enforcement agencies in Henry County, are hereby dedicated to supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building trust among families, collaborating with other service providers, and engaging our community in response efforts. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 18th through the 24th, 2021, shall be known as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Henry County. And they reaffirm this county's commitment to maintaining and expanding victim services and a criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Week and throughout the year. The Board wishes to express a sincere gratitude and appreciation to those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, and justice. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'd like to ask our county manager, Sherri Matthews, to come forward, please, to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Your consent agenda for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. We have an item from our Public Works Department. It is a resolution awarding a bid for sidewalk trip hazard mitigation and ADA compliance as an annual contract to Georgia Safe Sidewalks LLC of Lawrenceville, Georgia, in the amount of $262,725. We have a resolution from the Emergency Management Agency Department, a resolution approving a statewide mutual aid agreement between Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. We have another resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Georgia Department of Public Safety for use of communication tower space for our communication system. Under Leisure Services, we have the following resolutions. A resolution awarding bid RFQ number 73-21 to PDH Systems for the purchase of lighting, audio, visual at the Lucas Grove Recreation Center in the amount of $45,730 and $49,000, using funds from the Capital Improvement Plan. We also have a resolution approving the lease of tractor equipment necessary to operate the golf course from AG Pro LLC for a five-year term in the amount of $44,882,200, or 20, I'm sorry, using funding available in budget, which is from the Cotton Fields account, 61-49 rental equipment, and then the account number is 555-001-40522320, to lease the equipment available on the state contract from Sourcewell number 032119-JDC. We also have a resolution approving the lease of tractor equipment necessary to operate parks and athletic facilities from AG Pro LLC for a five-year term in the amount of $24,296,80, using funding available in the budget. Again, this comes out of the Parks area, rental of equipment. The account number is 10003150522320. Again, this is to lease the equipment available on the state contract from Sourcewell number 032119-JDC. And then we did add an item to the consent agenda. I believe the clerk did email this to you all late this evening. We received a resolution from the Georgia Department of Public Health regarding EMT services to staff. And so we have a resolution approving an agreement between the District for Public Health and Henry County, Georgia, for EMT services to staff the Henry County COVID-19 vaccination pod for emergency preparedness services at the Atlanta Motor Speedway. Chair Harrell, this ends the consent agenda. Chair Harrell, you're muted.
Okay, thank you, Sherri. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons, second to motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Now we move to the regular agenda. First item listed is SPLUS Resolution approving a budget amendment and awarding bid 21-68 for the resurfacing of 96 roads in Henry County, Georgia, to ER Snail Contractor, Inc., in the amount of $27,433,685 funds through SPLUS 2, 3, 4, and 5 respective district resurfacing accounts, DOT, LMIG funds, and general funds if necessary. Rocky Romero, will you come forward?
Good evening, Chair and Board members. We received this purchasing bid for, like you said, mentioned, Chair, we had 96 roads for resurfacing. I think this is the biggest one we've ever done in the county. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department per bid number 21-64 for the resurfacing of 96 roads in Henry County. Four seal bids were received and reviewed. ER Snail Contracting, Inc., provided the lowest bid at $27,433,685.70. A budget amendment in the amount of $2,069,606.66 is needed to cover the resurfacing costs in the respective district resurfacing accounts. This amount is available in the SPLUS 4 unallocated funds. As you remember, last year, we brought a resolution where we allocated some funds that were unallocated, but this is additional funding that was, that we have now also in addition to that. The roads slated for resurfacing are located in all five districts. And as I was mentioning, funding, funding will be through SPLUS 2, SPLUS 3, SPLUS 4, SPLUS 5, as well as County DOT, LMIG, and general funds if necessary. With this resurfacing contract, a lot of the SPLUS 2, 3, and 4 accounts will be used, meaning that most of the money will be spent. And hopefully, we can start closing SPLUS 2 and SPLUS 3 later this year. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment and also the award of the bid number 21-64 for the resurfacing of the 96 roads in Henry County to ER Snail. This is the list of roads on District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, and District 5. At that, you can see the bid tabulation with our ER Snail being the lowest bid. I will take any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions? Commissioner Thomas?
Just for the sake of our audience, Rocky, when it came down to determining what roads were selected for the resurfacing, did you go through a grading system or use a new technology that we were talking about that the county would have access to, to determine which roads would be a part of this 96-road resurfacing project?
We did the grading system that we've been using in the past, which is the G.DOT-PESA system. Now the county, through the County DOT, they are doing a new system where they're using actually a computer, computerized machine where they have HDTV cameras and they're actually driving through the county, checking every single road, every paved road, and it's going to give the county a better tool because the old system, it was more of a visual. I can go out there and rate a road 80, somebody else could rate it 70. This is more advanced, this is more technical, and it will provide a better, better tool. Plus, it will be provided, my understanding, it will be available for everybody to see, so everybody in the county can see the rating of each road.
Have we start using that system at all, or is it still waiting to use that system?
We're still waiting, they're actually driving the roads currently. I've actually seen them a couple of times through town. So, once they gather all that data, they will provide the county with all that information. And it will be provided by subdivision, by county, road, by district. So we will know where we are, it will provide us also a cost. What would be the cost of, let's say, District 4? And it will provide us also breakdown, what are the worst, worst roads? Of course, we would like to pave anything under 70. And with this new system, we will see that there's a lot of roads that will need resurfacing. So hopefully, these 96, they will be most likely in the system because they'll, they'll be completing this probably about summer. And of course, a lot of these roads won't be finished by summer. But the good thing about this is, once the software is completed, all the information is gathered into the software, we can go in there manually. And let's say, for example, a road in the district, Cotton Fields or Cotton Indian Creek, I mean, if it's paved, we can go in there and change it to 100. If it was 40, we can change it to 100 because we know it was paved. So it can be updated as we do the resurfacing.
Thank you for that information.
I can't, somebody's muted, Chair, you muted?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I think Commissioner Holmes has a question.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, she has a question.
I do, I do. Rocky, when, when will the work start?
If it's approved today, Commissioner, we will have to wait for two, you know, it takes about two weeks for the contractor to provide the information needed, the bid, the bond, the performance bond, insurance. Once that information is gathered and the project is assigned to my office, we'll head up, we'll set up a pre-construction meeting. So you're looking about three weeks from now to have a pre-construction meeting. And at that meeting, as we know, 96 roads, so five districts, we'll know more of how they're going to perform this. They have 18 months to do the work. And you may think 18 months is a lot of time, but it's 96 roads. And where we at, you know, by the time we actually start, which most likely will be end of May, we'll be in summer before we know it. So it, we'll know more, we can provide an update to the board once we have the pre-con. ER Snail is the second biggest contractor in Georgia, so most likely, they will have multiple, four workers are here, crews working. In the past, we had a contract that was not as big as this one, but they had three crews working at one time. So the possibility is that we can do more work, but we'll know that once we do the pre-construction meeting.
And Commissioner Holmes? We will also update this information. If you all remember, we now have a website for all of our SPLUS projects. And so this information will be on our SPLUS website that will show when the project is kicked off and the status of the project. So hopefully, that's information that you all will be able to refer to and then share with your constituents. But we'll make sure that all of that information is uploaded and it's a live document in terms of the update. So as Rocky proceeds through it, it'll show you the percentage of the project that's being completed. So that information will be forwarded to each of you all so that you all can share it as well.
Are there any additional questions? I call for a motion. Okay, motion by Commissioner Cannon, second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, uh huh, next item on the agenda, county, county attorney, a resolution by the Board of Henry County Commissioners setting a qualifying fee in the amount of $1,050 for the June 15th, 2021 special election and authorizing publication of the same. Patrick Jockstetter?
Good evening, Board, thank you for having me tonight. I'm trying. All right, before you, as a resolution, setting the qualifying fee of $1,050 for the June 15th, 2021 special election for the District 3 County Commissioner, this election will be to serve the remaining unexpired term. A special election, again, is going to be held on June 15th, 2021. Georgia law requires that this board set the, set and publish the qualifying fee, the qualifying fee is established by law, at $1,050. So the action you're taking tonight is really a pro forma action. Once you take, once you adopt this resolution, it will be forwarded to the Board of Elections. The Board of Elections will take care of, of publishing the qualification fee, holding the qualification, and conducting the elections. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? I call for a motion to approve the qualifying fee. Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Cannon. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is for Public Works and Ordinance by the Henry County Board of Commissioners to adopt regulations governing decorative signposts and placement of decorative signposts within the county right of way. David Simmons?
Yes, ma'am, good evening, Chair, good evening, Board. This is based on various homeowner associations have previously inquired about placement of decorative posts as a means of enhancing the appearance of their neighborhoods. The current county code makes no provision to allow for an HOA to place decorative street posts and signs for neighborhood enhancement. In order to provide a policy concerning these type of requests, county staff has researched other jurisdictions, requirements, policies in place on this topic, and has developed proposed code for this item. The proposed code allows for an HOA or developer to have a decorative post and related apparatuses installed meeting county standards and national breakaway standards, so long as HOA developer fills out the application and group, and agreement, which includes subdivision HOA being responsible for installation of the post per county requirements and continued maintenance of the installations. The application agreement will include language that the county is not responsible for signage. And upon any regulatory signpost being damaged, once notified, the county will install our standard sign and post. And once the HOA has reinstalled their decorative post and sign, the county will come and remove our sign after notification. Let's go back forward. I think I'm going the wrong way. Yeah. I thought it was forward, sorry. And some of that's kind of what I just mentioned, but it's there. Just if you want to look that over, as far as HOAs have previously inquired about this. And up until this evening, we haven't had anything in place. And we've come up with something for this to be put in place, but it basically puts responsibility on the HOAs for continued maintenance. And where we have existing signs, I proposed a fee requirement of $300 that'll involve our sign crew going out and removing the signs or picking them up after they place their decorative post. And a new Development 150, of course, there'll be county review on where they place them and the type of post, make sure it's crash-worthy and/or breakaway, that is. And again, just want to make it known, we don't maintain the decorative post items. And that we will install a standard post and sign if a stop sign or speed limit sign is knocked down. And that is a sample decorative sign post. If you wanted to, I just pulled this offline, so, off the web. So if you wanted to kind of have an idea what that looked like. And any questions?
Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Holmes?
Oh, yeah, that was going to be my question, David. I see that, that you can install a stop, a stop sign on these posts. Are, are these posts also for street signs as well?
Yes, sir, typically, the stop sign will have the street name assembly above it. If for whatever reason it can't do that, they can do a separate sign to the side. It's kind of, I guess, somewhat similar where a county road comes into a state route, we cannot put up a stop sign, but we can put up the street name sign, so we put them on a separate post. So I would think that would be something that we can allow, so long as they're placed in an acceptable location per our standards, per MUTCD standards.
And these posts would replace the existing posts, the standard posts that are in the subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions? I'd like to call for a motion to approve. Commissioner Holmes made a motion. Can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Thomas. Or is there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is on the planning and zoning. RZ-21-04, General Holdings Unlimited LLC of Monroe, Georgia, request a rezoning of RA Residential Agriculture to R3 Single Family Residence for the property located at 1496 Miller's Mill Road in Landlocked 27 and 28 of the 11th District. The property consists of 89.01-plus acres, and the request is for a single-family residential subdivision, District 4. Stacy Jordan.
Good evening, Chair Harrell. So the item before you is located on Miller's Mill Road, as stated, on the south side of the road, just west of the intersection with State Route 155. We're looking at 89 acres, the request has been for R3. Staff recommends approval of R2S instead of R3. On July the 25th of 2019, the Zoning Advisory Board approved a conditional use request for conservation subdivision for this subject property. So it's the option of the applicant to develop as a conservation subdivision. However, the zoning remains RA, hence the request of the applicant to change the zoning. The Zoning Advisory Board held a hearing on March the 25th, and they also recommended denial of the R3, but approval of the R2S with the 26 conditions, which are in your exhibit. which are in your exhibit books. These conditions have to do with number of lots. They have to do with the aesthetics of the buildings, the houses and so forth. The, um, these conditions are going to be displayed, but again, they're in your exhibits because I understand that it's, it's very hard to read and there are 26 of them. And Chair, if there are any questions, I'd be pleased to answer.
Okay, so are there any questions from the Board?
Stacy, minimum, minimum square footage on these homes are what, 2,800?
Yes, sir. Condition number 11 in your exhibits. The recommended minimum home size is 2,800, so they would go up from there.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
You're muted. So sorry. I wanted to make note, Chair Harrell, that I will make my comments after your public notices as public speakers, please.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including applicant, will have a collective total of 10 minutes to address the Board. Though, and those in opposition of the request will likewise have 10 minutes collectively. Stephanie, do we have anyone signed up to speak in favor?
We have two people that are signed up, and I believe they're for the applicant, Steve Moore and Neil Kobel. But I'm not sure Mr. Kobel's in, so Steve Moore, we'll move him over now.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm Steve Moore with Moore Bass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing General Holdings Unlimited in this zoning request. If I could have opportunity to share my screen, I got a brief just presentation that I can go over. Okay. Okay, everybody can see my screen, I assume?
No.
No? Now, okay. So this is the map of the subject property. It is located on Miller's Mill Road, approximately 89 acres right across the street from the cotton plantation and cotton fields subdivision. As Stacy mentioned, our request was originally for R3. And at the, once we received the recommendation of R2, we went back and did revise our plan. Our original request was 144 lots on R3, which we felt was compatible with the surrounding areas. Not necessarily the immediate adjacent tracts, as they were developed well before the existing sewer was constructed, which is, is shown down here in the bottom of this map. There's an existing sewer main here. And based on that construction, we're now required to tie onto that as part of our development. But there is R3 and R2 and a recent RS zoning approval within a mile of this site that has lots that we felt were compatible with, with our request. Nonetheless, after that determination was made, we went back to the, the drawing board and prepared a new plan. This is an R2 plan on sewer, these lots, this is the yield plan. These lots are 22,000 square foot, 115 feet wide. And as you can see from the, from this layout, we were able to get 132 lots on this project, on this, this particular approach, which is 12 lots less than our original request, which was for R3. But this was the yield plan, and as Stacy mentioned, in 2019, we got a conditional use approved to develop this as a conservation subdivision, which is our current intent. And so this is the conservation layout. So this is the same number of lots as the plan that we just looked at. These lots are, are, are same number of lots. The typical conservation subdivision approval allows for lots that are a quarter of an acre, 10,890 square feet, 60 feet wide. Through several meetings and discussions with staff and, and others, we have came up with this plan that is a, an increase in lot size and lot width from what's allowed under the conservation. These lots are 80 feet, 13,000 square foot minimum with a 15,000 square foot average. These lots still provide the 40 foot, the 40% conservation or open space that's required by the conservation subdivision. In addition, it also offers 100-foot buffers along Miller's Mill Road, 50-foot buffers along the entire perimeter of the project. And then there's an existing pond here and a creek that comes in and out of it that will be protected in open space. But a majority of this open space is buildable, is developable, is usable, is passive recreation. But in addition, we've brought this open space network throughout the project in an effort to really have every lot touch open space. That was kind of the intent behind this plan. We think it's a good feel. We think it offers a lot of, a lot more privacy than, than otherwise you would have. We have read all the conditions. We are okay with all of the conditions, really have no questions about those. And at this point, I think we've realized that the project's going to be developed. I think it's inevitable with the fact of the size, the location and the proximity to public utilities. We feel like it's going to be developed. We feel like we've done a, a very good job and a responsible approach in the type of development that we've done to preserve natural resources and to try to meet the, as many of the expectations as we could from, from some of the input that we received. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Thank you. Stephanie, do we have anyone that's speaking in opposition of the project? Are there any questions from the Board to Mr. Moore?
Neil Kobel is on, is on now. I don't know if he would like to speak. Let us, let us check with him real quick.
Okay, well Johnny Wilson had a question for Mr. Moore. Go ahead, Johnny. You're muted.
Yeah, you said 2,800 square foot minimum. Can you put a 2,800 square foot home on a ranch style home on a 80-foot lot? Can you get a side entrance on that?
I believe the zoning condition actually is 2,500 square feet. And we maybe have staff clarify that, but I believe the last condition that I received, set of conditions was a 2,500 square feet. Stacy, could you confirm that?
I'd be pleased to, to clarify that. The recommendation of the zoning advisory board is for 2,800 square feet. And I know that, that there has been discussion about whether that should be reduced to 2,500, but the official recommendation is for 2,800.
Our request would be 2,500 square feet. We felt like, based on the size of the lots and the, the product type, we felt like 2,500 square foot was appropriate. So however, we need to address that. But as far as a, a ranch being able to be built on that size lot, I, I would imagine that would be difficult. Neil may be able to speak more of that from a builder standpoint. But, but a, a two-story most likely would be more appropriate for that size.
Okay, so all the houses in that subdivision basically going to be two stories?
That would be, I, I would believe that is highly likely based on the minimum square footage and the size.
Because the two, the three subdivisions around this particular subdivision, Cotton Fields, Cotton Fields Plantation and Cotton Field 2, they're basically all ranches, all brick. So that would, that really won't fit the area that y'all put in the subdivision in.
It's, it's definitely, those are the, I'm not going to say they're outliers, but those are the two subdivisions immediately adjacent to us that we, that are not compatible. And again, only because they were built before that sewer line was built there. And to be able to build a lot that is 100, and those lots are probably 175 feet wide, with, and connecting the sewer would be a challenge. I mean, this, we felt like this was definitely compatible with the registry, which is on Cromley Road, which is probably less than a mile away. I mean, it's probably a half mile away, that the lots are 60 feet wide. The, the reserve at Calcutta, which is about a mile from this on Miller's Mill Road, the lots are, there's even townhome lots that are smaller than 60s, but a lot of them are 60 foot wide. So we felt like this was a consistent, actually even more larger than what is typical in this area for lots that have access to public sewer. But yes, it is different than the one acre ranch houses that are across the street.
So are you looking at all brick on these homes? Are you looking at 40% brick, 5% brick?
What, what we've requested was, what our intent was, was to have the option of building the craftsman style homes with the brick water table and the hardy everywhere else or an all brick home if the customer chooses.
Okay, so y'all not trying to build anything close to what that's in the community far as the other three subdivision? You're not even trying to do anything like that at all?
We're doing, I mean, I, I would say we're not doing anything like, I mean, I think that there are some homes in those adjacent subdivisions. I don't think they're all brick. And I think there are some that would be hardy, but what we're trying to do is something that's modern and more stylish than the all brick homes, which what, you know, some people want and some people don't. And we're trying to offer that the best of whatever the customer wants.
It says in the, it says that side entry garage when, when available or when, when, when it, I don't know how it's worded, but.
Feasible, yes.
Feasible. So how many side entry garages are you looking at doing percentage wise? So you're looking at 10%, 20%?
We haven't really come up with a number. We know that there are several lots in there that are capable of offering a side entry garage. A lot of the lots that are on the outside of a curve, a lot of lots in the cul-de-sacs, a lot of the corner lots are, are capable of proposing a side entry garage. But that's, again, that's why we left the condition worded as it is, just where it's feasible, we'll provide those. But I don't have.
80-foot lot with a two-story, most likely large amount of them's going to be a front entry garage.
For the lots that are the bare minimum width on the straightaway roads that are 80 feet wide, most likely those will be, those will be front entry, just because I think it's a challenge to get a side entry garage on an 80-foot wide lot when you don't have any room to swing driveways around. But there are a lot of lots that aren't on the straightaways that are on the, like I said, those that are on the outside of the curve where they get wider in the back, those that are in cul-de-sacs and the intersection lots, the corner lots, that should be capable.
So what, do you have any idea what the price of the homes are going to be in there?
Neil, are you on the call?
Yes, I'm here. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that, yeah, we'll be in the, homes will be in the 300,000 range. And one of the reasons we looked at the conditions that were on the other subdivisions that you mentioned, you just mentioned Commissioner Wilson. I think those standards were smaller square footage than what we're opposing, we're, we're proposing. In addition, the subdivision immediately to the north of this property that borders it, is homes that were, are, are 20 or so years old and they don't meet any sort of what the modern home looks like. There are a lot of ranches that were popular at that time. So, you know, the ranch conversation, there will be some ranches built in here depending on the customer. But the market has definitely changed in the last 20 years.
So the, so if your home value is going to start around 300,000, that's about half of what the homes are valued at in the other three subdivision next door and across the street, so.
Well, we met with one of the, of people that was, that was across the street when we brought this in 2019. He had just gotten appraisal to sell his house at $80 a square foot. So we will be over $100 a square foot sales price. They're, they're not twice as much. Those houses are not in the 600 and 700,000 dollar range.
Well, Mudzillo, Mudzillo said different, but anyway.
We did the research on that and we met with the, when we had our initial meetings and we were given the price of $80 a square foot was the recent appraisal. We'll be selling houses well over 100 square foot. So there will not be any chance of homes being devalued. As we all know, that the appraisal systems works on price per square foot.
Like I said, Mudzillo said different, but thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cannon.
Thank you. My question is to the developers, was there a previous negotiation with the surrounding communities earlier that now has changed in regards to the size of the lot, the size of the homes? My understanding is that there was previous negotiations with 115 feet lot width and of course, the, as already mentioned, the 2,800 square feet for the homes. Was there previous conversation, conversation about that?
There was, there was no previous negotiation. The conversation of the 115-foot lots came from a planning commission meeting. And at that time, we decided that that was not going to work for our vision for the property with what we're trying to do with the green space. As Steve mentioned, we had the conservation overlay approved, but we've increased the size after working with the staff and others to the average of 15,000 square feet. But we never agreed to 115 square feet.
The 115 square, the 115 linear feet, 22,000 square foot. Yeah, no, that's okay. That size is what is offered by the base zoning district, which is what we're requesting tonight, is just the rezoning. Once the zoning, if the zoning is approved, this board approves the zoning, we have a conservation or a conditional use that would allow us to develop it as a conservation subdivision. And by way of the proposed conditions, the size of the lots in the conservation subdivision would be increased beyond what the minimum allowable is in the conservation. But we haven't agreed to that, although that is the zoning district that we're requesting.
Okay, so it sounds like to me that there's a distance between the developer and the existing communities. So I guess my question is, as the developers, are you willing to, to negotiate some of this?
I feel like we have, but I'll let Neil speak.
Yeah, we've negotiated quite a bit with, working with staff and, and talking with commissioners. And so we, we, we have negotiated from what we originally brought back in 2019. We've increased the lot size, in-house size substantially from what, what we originally were asking for.
What was the house size original?
I want to say.
If you're saying you're at 2,500 now, what was it prior to that?
I believe we're at 2,020. I believe the zoning district called for 1,600 square feet, which is, is, and I don't, if I'm speaking incorrectly there, Steve, correct me, but I believe that's what the minimum was that was in the neighboring, two neighborhoods that we were there. It's either 16 or 1,800 square feet.
Okay, sounds right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the Board, can we, do we, Stephanie, do we have anyone on that is in opposition? Wants to speak in opposition?
No, ma'am. That was all the speakers that had signed up.
Okay. I did have one question for staff. And that is regarding condition number 11. We need to address what the square heated, square footage is because they're saying 2,500 and you all have 2,800. So I, we need some clarity on that.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. So the exhibits that you and the commissioners have is the recommendation by the zoning advisory board from March the 25th. Condition 11 states clearly 2,800 square feet. The applicant has proposed that we reduce that to 2,500 square feet. And perhaps that's something that the district commissioner would consider. But at this time, the recommendation is for 2,800 square feet.
Okay. That's the only question that I had. Our Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Chair Hurrell. We have a number of conditions and I know Stacy did not want to read those, but I think had he read them, a lot of questions would have been answered that was asked by the Board of Commissioners. I want you all to know that this development has come before us at least three times before. I think this is the fourth time. I have been working with this development group to make sure that we heard the concerns of the neighbors, we heard the concerns of the Board of Commissioners, and that we are proposing a development that does complement the area. Now, one thing is for sure, the surrounding communities were built twenty plus years ago and that was when people wanted one acres and a half acre lot. That is no longer the case. Those type of, uh, lots do not sell as fast. They do not, uh, render, uh, as much as a value as it once did. I also had a realtor check, and I didn't depend upon Zillow to do this. I had an expert realtor check on what those houses were selling. The average house selling in the ground surrounding community on a half acre lot, even an acre lot, is going for three hundred eighty four thousand to four hundred thousand dollars. They are not selling for six hundred thousand dollars. Maybe they are requesting that, but they are not selling for that. We do not want to do anything to cause a deflation in value here in that area at all. So what we have come up with is recommended R two S. I think that's a very good way for this subdivision to be developed. And during that R two S, we moved it down from a hundred and forty four lots to a hundred and thirty two lots, which there again gives them an opportunity to use the conservation subdivision as they have been approved for in twenty nineteen. Under the conservation subdivision, we have, uh, a plus amount of greenery that's added to the area to make sure that this is a community that we're building. As noted in the layout, that's a part of the, um, presentation tonight and that will be a part of the record. None of the houses back up to each other, each one of them back up to a private, no area, no two houses will come back to back. That's a plus for privacy in this particular area as well. When it comes down to price of these homes, they are to sell three hundred thousand dollar plus. That is a part of record and it should be a part of record. And any developer that comes to that area knows that's what these homes are selling for. We are looking to embrace a craftsman style home. Craftsman style homes are selling exceptionally well. And that means that there will be a water table around every home that's brick or either some type of, um, stoneware, but it must be at least a two feet water table around all the homes there. And then other parts of the homes are a mixture of material. And I will have Stacy read that into the record as, as, as well. The staff did recommend a twenty eight hundred square feet. We did talk about, and, uh, giving them a twenty five hundred square feet, and I do support twenty five hundred square feet because in addition to that, we're having a recessed garage area, an extended, um, driveway so that no one would have to park on the streets. And the recess garage area is embellished, so will not be a flat garage and it will have an overhang as well. So you now have a beautified area for a garage that's been framed and you will have a driveway that's extended forty feet to make sure that at least four cars can park additionally on that driveway without any type of, uh, having to park in the street or park on the road. And we did give them an opportunity to say, we use the side garages wherever is feasible as well. I would like for, if you will, Stacy, I know there are a lot of conditions and those conditions were done on purpose to make sure that we heard the voice of the community. I have talked directly with people in the community, believe me, I have. I have answered emails for people in the community to make sure, to let them know we're not trying to bring anything to their area to deflate the value of the area. District four doesn't do that. So if you will, Stacy, for record, for the record and for this Board of Commissioner, would you read the conditions that we have come up with? And these conditions will follow any developer. We wrote them very tight on purpose because developers do have a tendency to get a zoning approved, to get a purchase done and then sell it to another developer. This will not be dropped. Whoever comes here will live with these conditions. As I stated, each homes are to sell at three hundred thousand dollar plus. That is going to happen some way, somehow, nothing less than that. We're making sure, even though most of these homes will be two stories and most of them will have a frontage garage, they are framed and embellished with a one foot, I believe we have a one foot recess garage that's embellished with an overhang in front. So it'll look very, very nice with that craftsman style. So if you will, Stacy, please read those conditions, so the condition, so that the commissioners will know we have put in the time and energy to make sure we're putting forth a good development to bring before this board. And that came with a meeting, um, different experts in our house, from our engineering to our water, to our planning and zoning, uh, to Stacy, to myself. We sit around and talk about what do we need to do? Does this fit the community? Does it fit, um, the overlay districts that we have? Does it fit the zoning in the area? We did our homework on that and I'm proud to present this development to you. So if you will, Stacy, please read those conditions to the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be very pleased to. Just to, um, be clear, if I may ask a question. Commissioner, using the official recommendation as a base, um, the conditions that I'll read out, are they all the ones that we had discussed? Okay, um, number one, um, the number of lots shall be limited to one hundred thirty two. Number two, entrances shall align with existing streets across Millers Mill Road or be shifted to meet the minimum offset required. Number three, the entrances shall be located such that the minimum intersection site distance and the minimum spacing requirement are met per the road's posted speed limit and shall have a deceleration lane and acceleration taper designed and constructed to Henry County DOT standards. Number four, the improvements required by the traffic impact study shall be the responsibility of the owner or developer. This may include a left turn laner lanes. Number five, there shall be a minimum one hundred foot wide landscape buffer all along the Millers Mill Road frontage of the subject property. This buffer shall include wrought iron fencing or equivalent and brick columns all along the Millers Mill Road frontage of the subject property. Number six, there shall be a minimum fifty foot wide undisturbed buffer all along the perimeter of the subject property. Number seven, each entrance shall be grand entrances with wrought iron fences or equivalent and brick columns giving the impression of a gated subdivision. Number eight, the following shall be required. A, interior streets shall have a minimum five foot wide sidewalks on both sides. B, in addition, an eight foot wide sidewalk shall be provided along the property's frontage of Miller's Mill Road. C, pedestrian lights and street trees, which meet the equivalent standards of the highway corridor overlay district, shall be provided within a minimum seven foot wide landscape strip between the back of the curb and the sidewalk interior to the subdivision. D, street lights shall not be required interior to the subdivision. E, the HOA or owner or developer shall be responsible for the installation, maintenance, energy and related costs of the pedestrian lights along the property's frontage of Miller's Mill Road, meeting the equivalent standards of the highway corridor overlay district. F, should the HOA or owner or developer propose for the pedestrian lights to be located within the public right of way, the HOA or owner or developer shall enter into an agreement with the Henry County DOT determining the following. Conditions under which pedestrian lights shall be permitted within the public right of way. Responsibilities of the HOA or owner or developer. And penalties for non-performance. Nine, a landscape plan shall be required which exceeds the minimum ULDC requirements. Ten, all disturbed areas shall be sodded except where landscaping is present or installed. Eleven, all homes shall be a minimum of twenty five hundred heated square feet. Twelve, each home shall be built on site. Thirteen, each home shall have a minimum two car garage. Garages shall be side entry where feasible. Fourteen, any front entry garage shall be recessed by at least one foot from the front drip line of the home, which shall be illustrated on the building plans for building and plan review department approval. Fifteen, any front entry garage shall be framed by decorative grand style exterior molding with an overhang which shall be illustrated on the building plans for building and plan review approval. Sixteen, plastic garages shall be prohibited. Seventeen, all driveways shall be a minimum of forty feet in length measured from the back of curb with a minimum width of twenty feet. Eighteen, all homes shall include a covered front porch or stoop. Nineteen, all homes shall have a minimum two foot masonry water table on all sides. Twenty, the home, the home shall consist entirely of a combination of two or more of the following on all sides, brick, stone, stucco and cement fiber board or four sided brick on all sides. Provided that cement fiber board shall only be permitted as accent material comprising less than fifty percent of the heat, excuse me, of the square footage of the front elevation as determined by the building and plan review department. Vinyl based products are only permitted in the soffits, eaves and fascia. Number twenty one, an HOA shall be required. Twenty two, no more than five percent of the homes shall be rented out at any one time. Twenty three, a minimum of two playgrounds and one open air pavilion shall be provided and maintained. Twenty four, there shall be walking trails as an amenity. Twenty five, conservation subdivision lots shall be a minimum of thirteen thousand square feet with an average of fifteen thousand square feet. And twenty six, conservation subdivision lots shall be a minimum of eighty feet in width.
Thank you, Stacy. And as you can see, um, Chair Hurrell and to my fellow commissioners, we didn't just take time to talk to these developers. Like I said, this is the third time trying to find how can we, uh, bring a development to this area and make it one that people be proud to be around them. And I think we did that with these conditions. I certainly hope that you, along with me, can, um, can see that we do need to go ahead and pass this development, support it for what it has, if there are other conditions you'd like for us to consider. I am open to hearing those conditions as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions from any, uh, of the rest of the board? I'd like to call for a motion to approve our RZ dash twenty one dash zero four. Commissioner Thomas has made a motion. Can I get a second?
Madam Chair, before you, before you move on, could you make sure that the motion is to approve subject of the condition that's facing just right?
Okay. Okay, I made.
I'm sorry. I made a motion to approve, including the conditions that were read, uh, by Stacy Jordan on tonight.
Okay, so Commissioner Thomas has a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Commissioner Holmes has seconded the motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing nine, all in favor. Those that oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is RZ twenty dash zero six, South City Partners LLC of Atlanta, request a rezoning for RA residential agricultural and R two single family residence to MU mixed use for property located at twenty eighty Jonesboro Road and land lots eighty three and one ten of the third district. The property, the, the property consists of thirty one point one plus acres and the request is for a mixed use development in District Two. Stacy?
Evening, Chair Hurrell, Commissioners. This item before you, as you've stated, is located on Jonesboro Road just past McDonough Christian Church. And your exhibits and the, the overhead, um, they show the property extending over to, uh, Mount Olive Road. The applicant has stated that that is to be a later phase. The site plan that the applicant has provided shows that there will be access through this second phase to serve the first phase, providing access to both Jonesboro Road and to Mount Olive, which will be a part of the Western Parallel Connector System, which will serve as a frontage road along I seventy five. This Western Parallel Connector System is to be constructed by the Georgia Department of Transportation. And also I would note, Chair, that Jonesboro Road is in a long range plan to be improved. The zoning of the subject property is both RA and R two. The future land use map calls for mixed use. The applicant's request is for rezoning to mixed use. And this mixed use, uh, component, as we can see on the exhibits, is for both a commercial component and a multi-family component. So we're looking at a commercial component which would include offices and commercial retail and restaurants and so forth. The, uh, the residential component would be limited to two hundred eighty multi-family dwelling units. And the recommendation is that density be limited to sixteen dwelling units per acre, whichever of these figures is the, the fewer number. Also, we are recommending, and the zoning advisory board agreed after their hearing, that the total square footage of development on the subject property shall not be permitted to exceed four hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred square feet, and that's on this first phase. This was intended to keep this development under the threshold of having to be evaluated by the state as a development of regional impact. And there are other conditions as well that are in your exhibits. So we have thoughtfully considered the applicant's request. Uh, staff has recommended approval. The zoning advisory board recommended approval after their public hearing with seven conditions. And I know it's difficult to read, but these are in your exhibit books and I'd be pleased to answer questions. And Chair, I believe you're muted.
I'm sorry, are there questions for the board, from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Stacy, this is pretty much aligned basically what's across the street, is that correct?
Commissioner, what I would say is that we would want it to be of the same or higher quality as what is across the street, that the quality is our, our biggest concern. As far as the type of use, um, it does appear to be similar. As far as the, uh, density and the increase in the number of dwelling units and the impact on the infrastructure, the future land use map, which anticipates the year twenty forty, supports the applicant's request. I suppose the question before this body is, is it appropriate to go ahead and approve this at this time?
Right, thank you.
Okay, this, this is a public hearing. Our persons wishing to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a collective total of ten minutes to address the board. Those in opposition of the request will likewise have ten minutes collectively. Stephanie, do we have anyone, uh, that's here to speak in favor?
We do. Um, we have four people for the applicant and we're going to move them all into the room at the same time so they can share that time. And then we have one extra speaker that would like to speak in favor, Gene Morris, and we'll move him over after they have, um, presented. So it will be Will Cassidy, John Jordan. So, it will be Will Cassidy, John Jordan, Greg Heck, and Brooks Young.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is, hi, this is Greg Heck. I hope you're all well today. We appreciate Madam Chair and Commissioners, y'all allowing us to present this project. As we may remember, South City Partners has been before you before. Just a reminder that this is a locally-based developer with local knowledge. It's an award-winning developer. It won the ARC Development Award and ULI Project of the Year Award for its Alpha Reddy City, City Center. It won an ARC Award for Development of Excellence in downtown Kennesaw. It won a Development of Excellence Award from ULI in Avondale Estates. It won a Development of Excellence Award from ARC at its Inman Park Mixed Use Project. Will Cassidy is lead on this project for South City, and Brooks Young is an engineer on the project, as I understand, and lead on this as well. As you know, this is a rezoning request for about thirty-one acres of property. It's currently made up of three parcels owned by Mr. Morris and his family. Our client is under contract to purchase it. The county's comprehensive land use plan already designates this property for mixed use, and we are requesting to have the current zoning amended to mixed use in compliance therewith. We believe this could be a very strong jobs and commercial tax contributor based on the type of development that is encouraged usually by South City Projects. You probably have seen this presentation packet. Can you see my screen as it's being shared? Can this, is this up in front of you?
No, sir.
No, sir.
It's not. How do I share this? It doesn't look like my share screen. Let me see if this will allow me to... Oh, now it's allowing me. Okay, great. Let me share this with you. Can you see it now, Commissioners? Is it on there for you now?
Mr. Heck, we're not able to see that at this time.
Huh. It says I'm on share screen. Let me see why I'm not. All right, share content. It's not going up. What about, what about... Is it on there now?
It's on there now.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So, I, I, I know you've already seen the conceptual site plan. I wanted to show you the renderings to show you that this is top-of-the-line in terms of the area that we understand there's some interest in, more than anything, which is what type of apartments are you talking about? This is a rendering, not a rendering, but a picture from a recent project, for example, that South City has worked on. This shows you the beautiful project. One of the conditions is a pool, I believe a clubhouse. You see that these are really top-of-the-line projects, and, and one of the things that these types of projects do is that they bring in the type of medical professionals and other professionals, and, and really gathers great professional employees that I understand that... Sorry, this is, I'm trying to get back to where I was. Goodness gracious. Uh, let's see. Wonderful. Am I back on with y'all? Or have I lost out?
Mr. Heck, we're seeing a, a black screen at this time.
You're saying I'm trying to get back to you. For some reason, it looks like I have been taken out, except for me. Wonderful. Let's see. Let's see why this is not. And, okay, let me see if I can... It's not letting me go back. Can you un, can you put me out of control and put me back in? Is that possible, to take me out of share, whoever's holding it? All right. If you, you can hear me, correct? There you go. All right, now you can see me. I appreciate that. Basically, we would also state that this is consistent with the projects around it. In terms of other projects, I'm sure you know across the street is Mandalay Villa's apartment complex, where there are three-hundred units. Across the street is Canyon Springs, that has more units. While it's been allowed for five-hundred-and-forty units, there are probably at most, it looks like that footprint would only allow for up to about, I don't know, three-hundred units. Our proposed project is lower in terms of the apartment issue than any other project. It's limited to two-hundred-and-eighty, and these are the highest quality that you would see, all over Atlanta with, as we have said, award-winning projects for mixed use. So, we know you're going to have some questions. We want to work also with the district commissioner, who may have some suggestions or ideas. We, we had a nice meeting with her this afternoon, and we're happy to work with her on her interests and concerns, if that means coming back again. We're happy to do it, but we're, we're here for you today. I don't know, Will, if you wanted to add anything?
No, thank you, Greg. I would just add that we're excited and appreciate the opportunity, our potential opportunity to work in Henry County, and, and we're hopeful that working alongside all of you, as well as the, the citizens of the county, that we could bring a quality project to the county and something that we believe will be catalytic and, and helpful with the continued growth of the county. And I think one thing that we have picked up on is the tremendous job growth story that Henry County boasts, and the tremendous amount of sustainable growth that, that you all and the citizens of Henry County have been able to create. And we believe that the existing demand and continued demand, even looking two, four, ten years out from now, will largely be supported by quality housing options like we are proposing, as well as quality mixed-use products like we are proposing as well. We have gone into a multitude of municipalities, jurisdictions, counties, et cetera, and we have watched these job growth stories, and we have watched these tremendous trajectories be supported by, you know, Commissioners and council people continuing to support the growth of quality housing stock, which continues to allow for the growth of quality employers and quality employment growth. And so, we are simply here to ask for approval in that we might come alongside you and help aid in the continued growth of Henry County's economy and, and job growth and, and future trajectory by virtue of providing a top-notch project that will appeal to both existing employers, but also future employers as they look at potential locations for Henry County. We expect that this project would be something that they would look at as a viable option for any of their future employees.
Let me, let me just, if I can, add one more thing. We're, we're grateful for your review. We're obviously asking for equal treatment and fair treatment when in relation to other projects of similar type that already exist or already have been approved, and consistency with our equal protection rights and constitutional rights, as well as you can imagine, and due process rights. And we're grateful for your view and understanding.
Okay, Stephanie, you said that there was someone else that wanted to speak in favor?
Yes, we will move Gene More, or, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Gene Morris over right now. Hold on one sec.
Can you hear me?
I hear you now, yes.
Thank you, Chair. Chairman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Just wanted to take a minute to speak in behalf of this rezoning request. Our family has farmed, lived on this land for most of the last hundred years. We love this community. We love Henry County. When we saw that the Commissioners unanimously set this area aside as mixed use a couple of years ago, we realized that we were standing in the way of progress. This is kind of a remnant parcel of the old farm that included about the western half of Henry Town Center, McDonough Christian Church, Crown Park, the intersection of Chambers Road and Jonesboro Road, about a mile up and down Jonesboro Road and Chambers Road. But this was the last piece we were holding on to. And we decided, you know, it's time that we become part of this continuing growth of Henry County. And we reached out to South City Partners because we recognize them as one of the best developers in the Atlanta area, based on the awards and recognitions they've received. We want something good. We want to see a first-class grocery store for that part of the county, and that's something we're working very hard to get in up there on the commercial front, as we've talked to a number of national realtors or retailers, and they've had a good bit of interest. The apartments that are going in are the kind of apartments that my sons, who've moved out of state for work and college, are living in, and they are first-class apartments. I think there's something that would be a great addition to Henry County and allow us to keep young people, such as my sons, if they choose to come back to Henry County, it would be somewhere that they could live, and they would like to live, in professional Trust y'all will make a, a wise and good decision for the future of the county, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve.
I have a question for the developers. First of all, let me thank you for hearing the concerns that I had after speaking to the community. They are still concerned about the traffic and the impact that this community is going to have on the traffic. But we've talked about some things that I think will help mitigate some of the traffic concerns, and that is if we move the apartments to the Western Parallel side, just doing some movements with the layout of the property. And we talked about moving the apartments over to the Western Parallel side so that that traffic is coming out in the busy four-lane road, then dumping it directly onto Jonesboro Road, and making the Jonesboro Road side the town home side, which is what I asked for the last time you guys presented before, is to add the town homes, which is a, be simple. I did look at South City Partners' projects on your website, what you've done in other communities, and we would expect nothing less from the town homes and the apartments with the amenity packages. We would like for you to comply with the overlay district for the Jonesboro Road side and give us sidewalks on the front of the property, so that the residents can walk from the property to the commercial area that's already there and the corridor that's already there. That will help eliminate traffic because people won't have to get in their cars to drive to the grocery stores. I've also talked to staff about the commercial piece being restricted to OI and restaurants and those commercial things that are within neighborhood commercial, as we call it. Stacy, please correct me, I believe that's C1.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That way, we don't have to worry about... Is that correct, Stacy, C1?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That way, we don't have to worry about what type of commercial goes there, but it would be commercial that's benefiting to the community. So, if you guys can look at those things and agree with those things, I'm prepared to recommend to the board to approve this tonight. If you think you need to go back and look at the layout to see if it's going to work, I think everything stays the same, but I really would like to see houses that are for sale, brownstones on the front side of Jonesboro Road near the residential. Put the apartments on the Western Parallel Connector so that they have access there. Sidewalks on the front. We're looking to widen Jonesboro Road, add sidewalks now. That will start the process because you're right past the church. If we pass T-spots, the county will be picking up and a lot of that. But now the developers are investing in the community and making it walkable, and that's what we want. That's what we see in your other projects, and that's what we welcome to Henry County.
Are there any additional questions or comments? I can't. Greg, go ahead.
I think, I think there are a lot of good suggestions there, ideas there, which we definitely want to work with. I don't know if, I, I don't know if we have a site plan that actually addresses exactly what the commissioner is referencing. I'm gonna let Mr. Cassidy talk about it. I don't remember if C1 also allows for a grocery store or not, because they just don't have the uses, and I know that's something that there's an interest in. I don't know if Stacy knows or not, I'm sure he does.
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay.
So, can I ask one question? I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. So, you said the, there'd be a restriction on some of the uses upfront. Would that mean it's still all under the mixed-use zoning, but just with a restriction? Is that how that works? I'm just trying to understand technically. Okay.
Stacy, you have a question, but that's pretty much it, Will. It would be restrictions. And as far as the grocery store, Greg, the concern is, is that if there's a grocery store that you have a grocer, you would come back. The issue with allowing the grocer upfront is that zoning would allow other large things like beauty supply stores or large dollar stores, and we want to restrict that. So, I would think that if we leave it O1... I'm just trying to protect the community in that area. If we restrict it to, you know, office OI, restrict it to C1, if you have a grocer and it's, it's a Publix or a Whole Foods or a Whole, you know, something like that, you can come back and we can address that then, but we want to make sure right now that whoever comes in after you guys that gets that land or looks at a grocery, they got to come back before this board so that we can make sure that we protect what goes there.
Okay, so, you know, this is more a, a Will and Mr. Morris decision than a, than a lawyer decision, so you guys need to kind of...
Sure. I guess my, my question would be from a procedural standpoint. How should we, would we just go ahead and approve the, the plan tonight with the conditions that are being laid out, and then come back with a, with the revision later on, like a, a building permit? I guess, if y'all could help me understand how we, how we could lay out the process, that'll help us try to determine what, what the next...
Staff has done it like this before, Will, and then they will just have it in the, and Patrick can weigh in on it. They would just have it in the conditions that you will come back and have the site plan approved, but that specifically that those apartments would be on that Western Parallel Connector side, where that traffic flow will go out there and not be dumped onto Jonesboro Road. The town homes can come out to Jonesboro Road. They would be the, you know, the two-story brick town homes. Stacy, they would need to meet the criteria that we have with the all-brick stucco stone, and we move from there. We just really want to make sure that we have taxpayers that are buying properties in this mixed-use project as well, even though it is a little further down Jonesboro Road. We always support it mixed use, but we need to get the town homes in there so that we can have some properties that are taxpayers as well.
If I may, Chair, just for clarification, if what we're talking about is putting the apartments on the portion of the developer's land that is to be Phase Two, I can tell you that that wasn't addressed in our legal description, in our legal ad. We only advertised the thirty-one acres for Phase One. So, if the idea is to put the apartments on Phase Two, that action would not be able to be taken by this board tonight. So, what we would recommend, especially so that it's not rushed, so it can be done thoughtfully and well, and perhaps with the input of staff, is for this to come back and not be acted upon tonight.
Stacy, let me ask you a question. Would it have to go back before the ZAP?
If they are going to ask for a, a rezoning to allow for the second phase to be included as part of the action of this Board of Commissioners, Phase Two will have to go back before the zoning advisory board, yes.
Are you, are you, I may be confused. Commissioner, are you meaning that you want the apartments closer to the western side of the present phase? Or you mean in the, or you, you mean going to the phase that's not part of it?
It was my understanding, and you guys clarify this, when I'm looking at the site plan, there is an entrance into this phase that we're talking about tonight that's from the Western Parallel Connector. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the, I think, I think the confusion may be that, as Stacy was laying out, the, the upper portion of that property that touches, that actually physically touches the Western Parallel Connector was left out of this application due to the way that ARC calculates square footages, really has nothing to do with the actual footages we're trying to build. It defaults to a standard square footage, and when you do that, it sort of... It defaults to a standard square footage, and when you do that, it sort of artificially kicks our project into a DRI threshold, which we were trying to avoid because the reality is what we would build would be much less than that. And then, once we came back with the second phase, we'd be able to use existing or what was already approved as the real square footages. So it was really kind of a numbers game we were trying to play to make sure that we didn't get kicked into a process artificially. And so what we're suggesting is that the, or what we're trying to make clarity on, I guess, would be if the property on the plant that's before you that isn't technically part of the application, if that's the property that you're referencing, or if we're talking about just the property within the 31 acres that's on the current agenda, I guess.
We're talking about just the property on the 31 acres. There's already an interest coming out to the Western Parallel Connector. We looked at the site plan together earlier today, moved the apartments over there and put town homes on the front. And then apartments would come out on the Western Parallel Connector instead of coming out on Jonesboro Road. That way, they can go left, they don't have to come back up right to Jonesboro Road.
Okay, so I think what might make the most sense then is to revise the site plan, let's have some further dialogue and make sure that we're all on the same page about how that gets configured, and then Stacy can help us through the procedurally what that means for ZAB or any other steps that need to be taken. But I think we're in agreement with what you're suggesting. I think we just need to try to understand how that's going to work procedurally.
Let me say this, Stacy, and I would like Patrick to weigh in. You guys, I mean, I think it's been several months now. We've talked about that we went back, you've come back again, you complied with giving us the town homes, you understand we need the traffic mitigated and putting the apartments on that side. I really would like to see how we can help them move this project forward. Patrick, please weigh in what we need to do. If it is that they need to stop, how could we expedite to make sure that they don't have to wait another six months to deal with this project?
And Commissioner, to that end, we would recommend that this come back before this board.
What date are we looking at, Stacy?
Yes, ma'am. As long as this does not have to come back before the zoning advisory board, in other words, if it doesn't affect Phase 2, we could get them on May 18th. But if this has to go back before the zoning advisory board to add Phase 2, then we'll have to go through that procedure as well.
Well, we'll figure it out before then, and then I would just ask that I work with the Chair, because the Chair approves the agenda and see if we can get it on. And Madam Chair, I would just ask that we don't continue to delay it. They are trying to work with us. So Patrick, we'll hear from you, I guess.
Well, I'm not familiar enough with the overall project. All I know about is what has actually been applied for rezoning. And if, if what you're trying to accomplish, Commissioner, is to impose conditions on property outside of what the application addresses, then that would require a new application that would need to start over. So I'm a little unclear about, about the overall project. The way, there's a site plan that includes 31.1 acres, which is subject to your rezoning action today. If there's an application to rezone 31.1 acres. I understand there's an additional 10 acres or so that you're talking about tonight, and if, if we're trying, if it is your intent to zone that 10 acres, then we would need to start all over. If the intent is to shift around what's shown on the site plan for the 31 acres, I think it would make sense to get a revised site plan so that we, there's no way we're going to be able to describe in a meaningful way what you described for purposes of a zoning decision, you know, moving the apartments to here and the town homes to here. We really, I think we really need to see a new site plan, and as long as it's the same zoning request for the same property, even if it's a different site plan, we shouldn't have to go back to the zoning advisory board. It would just come back to you, just like any other table zonings. So that would be my recommendation, is let's get a site plan that reflects what you have expressed, that you're willing to support, and when that site plan is submitted, it can come back before the board, and we could probably go ahead and run advertising and be prepared for it to come back on a date certain, if the developer can ensure that he can have a site plan to staff in sufficient enough time to review.
So I guess it's on the developer.
I think so.
Because we're only talking about the 31 acres before us tonight.
Okay.
So I would say that we can, we understand exactly what I think we're all trying to accomplish here. I think we could, we could come back. When would we need to, question for you guys, when would we need to submit a revised site plan? What date would that be required by?
Madam Chair, we can work with the applicant to get these exact dates. We need time to advertise this adequately, meet our legal requirements for notification, so as soon as possible, but staff can get the exact dates to the applicant.
Okay, so one of the things that I would like is for you all to put in writing what you guys want them to do. I mean, we, this is the, they've been before us, let's put it in writing what we're requesting so that we will be able to settle this matter when they come back before us.
And my thing is that I don't know, we're not talking about new land. We're only talking about the 31 acres that are before us today. So it shouldn't have to do anything else. If the applicant is saying that they can move the land, move it around with an additional site plan, then they just need to do a site plan and come back before us, because we're not even discussing the R2 zone.
Okay. So I think we'll just, we'll just revise a site plan and submit a revised site plan. Or, or the other option would be if we're all, if we're all on the same page about the 31 acres we're talking about right now, we could just impose the, the commercial restriction to C1 and then, and then suggest that the single-family fee simple, et cetera, would be between the multifamily and Jonesboro Road, meaning that would be the buffer use between the multifamily and Jonesboro Road.
Correct.
So we would also be okay if we just went ahead and approved that. I think we can work out the site plan, but we'd also be okay just approving the existing application tonight with that stipulation.
I would recommend that you have a site plan that you approve. It's, I have listened, and now I've not been involved in any previous discussions, but I have listened to all the conversations tonight, and if you were to ask me to repeat back what we've done, there's no way I could do it. And what you're discussing today has to be reduced to a written resolution, has to be made part of your zoning minutes, and I'm not sure anybody could do that. So I would recommend, so that we don't get behind an eight ball of argument about what the site plan was supposed to have showed, let's get a site plan that satisfies everything that Commissioner Clemens, that you discussed with the applicants. If planning staff was there, I'm sure that everybody can put their heads together and come up with a list that can just be checked off for the engineers to prepare the site plan.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation that we table this and have the developer work directly with Stacy. All of us have met, the staff and the development, the developers and I have met, and let them get on the same page, the developers and staff, and then present it to us again.
Okay. So, so Patrick, how do we handle?
There's a, it sounds like there's a motion to table, so a second and a vote on the motion to table, and then staff and the applicant can work together for scheduling.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Clemens, a second by Commissioner Holmes. Greg, did you have a question?
You're muted.
You're muted. I can't hear you.
Can we table it to the soonest meeting so that it comes back on May 18?
Correct.
I'm not sure you can advertise in time. You're going to have to let staff sort that out. I would recommend, board, don't set a date certain. Let staff, instruct staff to bring it back as soon as possible, assuming they can satisfy all the legal notice requirements.
Sherri, did you get that?
Me? Why do I need to get?
Yes, I received it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a live motion on the floor. Second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item is RZ 1-07, Lenar Multifamily Communities of Atlanta Request a Rezoning From RA Residential Agricultural to Mixed, MU Mixed Use For Property Located At 243 Mill Road In Land Lot 114 Of The Six Districts. The property consists of 42.4-plus acres, and the request is for a mixed apartment and future commercial development District 2. Stacy?
PowerPoint, please. So this item before you is located on Mill Road backing up to I-75, just south of the existing commercial node and just north of the single-family residential subdivision that's clustered around the intersection of Mill Road and Mount Carmel. The subject property is Zoned RA Residential Agricultural. It's located between property that's Zoned C3 and property that's Zoned R3. The future land use map calls for mixed use for this subject property. The applicant's site plan shows future commercial development on the approximate 10 acres along the frontage of Mill Road. For the remaining approximate 32 acres, they're showing an apartment complex, and this apartment complex is proposed to have 324 dwelling units. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request. We have considered the future land use map. We've considered the character of the area and especially the unique location of the subject property between commercial development and single-family residential development. We've considered the fact that the traffic seems to be very congested along Mill Road. We've considered the fact that there is a roundabout planned at Mill Road and Mount Carmel. We've considered the access of the potential residents of the subject property to access the commercial, at the commercial node along Jonesboro Road. The recommendation of the zoning advisory board is for approval with 12 conditions. It was clarified with the zoning advisory board District 2 appointee that the intent for the condition 2 was to not include interior corridors. If it's the pleasure of the board, if it's the board's pleasure to go along with that, condition 2 would read, "The development of dwelling units shall be limited to modern resort-style apartments. The property shall be developed as a gated apartment community that shall be maintained and monitored at the property owner's expense." And again, these are 12 conditions. I know that it's impossible to read them, but they are in your exhibits, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, and persons wishing to speak in favor of the requests, including the applicant, will have 10 minutes, and those who want to speak in opposition have the same. Stephanie, do we have anyone here to speak in favor?
Yes, we have the presenters, and we'll move them over at the same time. Ray Crocker, Julie Sellers, and Jennifer Taylor.
Thank you.
I will need to share my screen.
Okay.
The area is not available to share at this point.
No.
Able to see the screen?
We see it now. Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Julie Sellers, and I'm here on behalf of Lenar Multifamily Companies, along with Crocker. We are here and want to just briefly talk to you about the application. If we could just show, just to orient you, I think you are probably all well-familiar, this is to the west of I-75, along Mill Road, north of Criddle Creek, and south of Jonesboro Road. If we go to the next slide, I want to talk to you just for a moment about how the zoning request that we are asking for is an appropriate transition. As you see, we have the Rowan Shire Communities to the south, which are single-family detached homes, and then you have Criddle Creek. On the north side of Criddle Creek, you have the development site highlighted in blue, which is a mixed use of commercial along the Mill Road frontage and the luxury apartment homes on the rear of the parcel. That transitions into the heavy commercial properties towards Jonesboro Road, along Mill Road and up towards Jonesboro Road. Across the street, I did want to mention that property is in a conservation easement, so just directly across the property from us, that vacant land is in a conservation easement. And if we go to the next slide, you can see what the current zoning is RA. And as you can see on here, the red is the C3 heavy commercial, the yellow is the R3, which again is the Rowan Shire, your residential, single-family. So what we're producing, what we are proposing is a transition from the commercial to the residential and requested the mixed-use zoning. On the next slide, I'm going to show you the future land use map. As you all know, the county spends a lot of time envisioning the growth of the county, and this parcel is highlighted in purple, which is the mixed-use classification. And I've attached for you at the top so that you can see, circled in yellow is the zoning district for MU, which is compatible with the future land use designation of mixed use. The current zoning RA is not consistent with the county's future vision for the property. So if we can go ahead and go to the next slide, we are coming before you. We have appreciated working with the staff, we've appreciated the zoning advisory board's recommendation, we appreciate the Commissioner Clemens' time with us. I did want to acknowledge, we haven't had the chance to meet with all of the commissioners, so if there are questions that you have that we cannot address tonight, we'd certainly be happy to continue that conversation and continue to explore this. This is the first time we've been before you. I wanted to highlight Stacy touched on what you see, condition number 2. He's already touched on that. We would just ask for a slight modification or the modification that Stacy recommended. The other request is a condition number 11, talked about an eight-foot sidewalk. I wanted to note, and I think the Commissioner mentioned this before, with T-Splat fundings and increasing sidewalks in certain areas, the requirement is an eight-foot wide sidewalk, that's larger than any of the sidewalks in the area, but we are amenable to that. We would just ask for that to be done at the same time with the commercial retail development. Condition number 12, and I'm going to let Ray speak to that in just a moment, the, as you all knew, the county wants to see a mixture of materials on the exterior of the building. So what we are proposing is a mixture of materials, but we have a white painted brick, which is a high-end luxury exterior finish, and then the code would ask for stone or stucco. Stucco is not the most modern finishes. It's fine, but what we are asking for is cementitious siding, which is actually a higher quality and a more modern look, so we would ask for your consideration to add that as another exterior option that you'll see in the elevations. I wanted to touch on just one of the conversations from the earlier application, and this is also following up on some conversations that we had with Commissioner. You know, if the Commission is so inclined to add an additional condition number 13, that would be adding a restriction on the commercial uses... That the commercial uses would be limited to the uses allowable In the C1 and O&amp;I zoning districts and restaurants. We are certainly amenable to that. Our vision of this is not big-box scale. We are single-family residents. So what our vision is, is truly a neighborhood-scale retail center. And I'm going to go ahead and let Ray continue talking about Lenar Multi Family And the vision for this luxury apartment.
Sure. Thank you, Julie. So what you see here is our proposed site plan. And in the front, along Mill Road, Is the proposed neighborhood-scale retail, Where we would envision a five-thousand-square-foot restaurant With outdoor seating and dining and a lot of green space For outdoor events or things that would be appropriate for neighborhood-scale retail. We have ten thousand square foot of shops where you would have coffee, Maybe an ice cream and yogurt shop, hair salon. And then we'd also have office here, Which could be medical office or something of such. As you come in Mill Road, We would have, as Julie mentioned, the eight-foot sidewalks here. We would have street skates with large street trees, lighting, And that would carry all the way up into the residential community, which you enter here. The front would have a monument sign, obviously, For the advertisement for the retail and for the residential. As you come in, you would have front door parking to our five-thousand-square-foot clubhouse here. And we would have then a large courtyard With a resort-style swimming pool That's surrounded by three large residential buildings With about seventy-five units that would be our premium units That would be, have pool views and direct access to that amenity. A little more detail about the courtyard here. We would have your pool cabanas, fire pit amenities, Some areas for gathering. You would have a children's playground in this area. And again, you would have direct access into the units With the interior corridors here. And the mail kiosk would be here at the front. Going back to the site plan here, Some of the other site amenities that we would see around the site, We would have a large, about a three-thousand-square-foot dog park, Where we would have an outdoor grilling and dining area here. We would also have a walking trail that runs along the Criddle Creek buffer, Where we would have areas to stop and rest, exercise, or just relax. That would lead all the way around the site for exercising. Other areas of the site, you would have, you know, grilling. You would have the festoon lighting. You know, we really encourage the tenants to socialize And to get to know each other within the community. So our exterior finishes, as Julie mentioned, We've designed the buildings with exterior brick on forty percent. And the other siding is horizontal lap and vertical board and batten, Which gives it a depth and an architectural look That we feel is most modern look here. And, you know, this is the siding material that we would be using. It is a cementitious siding, very similar to stucco, Which is a concrete, so this is a concrete material, Which would be an upgrade to stucco. Just want to go through our interior finishes real quick. So we have, we would have quartz countertops here. This shows granite, but we would upgrade to quartz countertops here. We would have nine-foot ceilings, open floor plan With stainless appliances, ceramic cooktop stove, And luxury vinyl plank flooring. You would also have a subway tile backsplash, LED lighting throughout, And the pendant lighting in the kitchen. This is just a comparison to one of the other projects in the area, Which is done very well. And we just wanted to show the differences here. There's really not much difference. The only difference is that our color palette is a little lighter coloring And unit sizes and the grants would be about the same as Canyon Springs. That's all we have. Open up for any questions. Would love to discuss the proposed project with you.
Okay. Stephanie, well, did the board have any questions? If I went on, if we have any oppositions, I'll let them go before I talk, Madam Chair. Okay, Jenny, let's hear the opposition first. Stephanie, we have people, any people signed up for opposition?
Yes, we will move them over now. It's Jamal Avery will speak first, and then Shandrian Campbell. We'll wait to move her over until he's finished.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Avery. Yes, we can hear you.
Afternoon, good evening, Commissioner Wilson. My name is Jamal Avery. I am for the record at Appleport State Park In the Village of Rowanshire Committee. I wanted to speak in opposition of this proposed development, Not only due to the fact of the traffic impact, But also the proposed developments that already came down the pipeline Within this area of District Two. Questions were raised at the zoning meeting In regard to adjacent apartments or apartments of like size, Such as Canyon Springs and Karma Vista. Most units, those apartment complexes at this current time Are not currently one-hundred percent occupied. However, once they do become one-hundred percent occupied, We're looking at a number of students impacting our school system. Chief Ackerman also spoke in regards to our strain on county services In regards to medical services and also police services. Within this area of Jonesboro Road, We will have an increase in traffic with the number of people of this proposed development, Not only with the proposed development that was discussed prior to this. Unfortunately, this is not a good look for our community, And it's not a trade-off from the commercial aspect Going down to totally apartments. There's nothing necessarily mixed-use about this proposed development. It's a hundred percent apartments. There's no fee simple units. There's no potential for ownership of any of these units. And I've expressed with my neighbors, And we have strong opposition against this proposed development On the same site in which, you know, we were once considering aquatic center. So again, I ask that my commissioners vote against this proposed development. And if you guys do decide that you put extreme conditions on the commercial component, And if you would include some fee simple homes within this development, Because apartments totally is not an answer within this particular area. That's all that I have. And I ask that you strongly consider, you know, the things that I said. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Avery. Stephanie, can y'all move the next person over?
Move Shandrian Campbell over now.
Hi, my name is Shandrian Campbell. For the record, I reside at 739 Hennepin Terrace, Montana, Georgia, 30253 in the Village of Rowanshire. I strongly oppose this, as I have in the first rezoning meeting. We, the development is on, It's on territory that's basically for reserved species. As Julie mentioned, it's on the parallel side of Criddle Creek. I did not know there was a creek there, But from my backyard, I do see a lot of heavy water evidence. So it's interesting that you want to put residential areas on top of water. Don't know how that works, but some contingencies I've thought of, If this proposed deal does go through, Is to widen the lanes on Mill Road. In addition, adding turn lanes into not only Rowanshire, But a turn lane into the Peachtree Peddler area That is directly next to your proposed property. And fast-track the roundabout on Mount Carmel and Mill Road, Because the traffic is going to be horrendous. Like Jamal mentioned, not only with the Canyon Springs development, The previous development that was mentioned, And the development around the corner from Mount Carmel And our residential area of Rowanshire. It's a lot of traffic. And it seems like we've been bottlenecked into, Like barricaded into our neighborhoods. There's no easy access to get out when all these developments pop up. So again, widen the lanes, include sidewalks on both sides, As well as two turn lanes going into our neighborhood And Peachtree Peddler is where the proposed property is adjacent to. And again, just to mention that this is a huge strain On the school system having this many residential areas Around, in such a small area. And again, it's on protected species land. So it's just interesting that from your site plan, It looks like the mixed-use version of your proposal Backs right up into the protected species part of the Criddle Creek, As well as residential areas right in their backyard. So I, again, strongly oppose this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campbell. Stephanie, is that it?
That's it, yes.
Okay, do you have any questions from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
I have questions for the county attorney. Patrick, my understanding is that you, along with Commissioner Clements, Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Thomas, Had a meeting here at the admin building About this particular piece of property with the developer about the rezoning. Is that correct?
We met, excuse me, no, I had a meeting with the commissioners And the developer, developer's representative. It was less about the rezoning. It was more about the proposal at the time To, for the owner to donate, I think the rear portion of the property for the proposed aquatic center. The zoning issue came up, But the meeting was really more about the proposed donation.
Okay, but y'all did have, y'all did talk about the rezoning in January About this piece of property.
There was discussion in the meeting about the rezoning, And I think ultimately, the county manager put the applicant in touch With planning and zoning staff, And they, I think they went downstairs and concluded the pre-application meeting at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to say to the constituents that came out That we are all on the same page about this development in this area. We have talked to the developers frequently about the commercial piece in the area. We've talked about limiting the units to just one and two bedrooms, Sidewalks, having it to be a real mixed-use development, The traffic study, the widening of the street, the sidewalks, all of those things. And I asked them to still present tonight, Although they still have a lot of work to do to meet the obligations that we're asking, Because I wanted the residents to be heard. I want the developers to be able to sit down with the community To talk about those issues that we're talking about, Which is the sidewalks, the highway, meeting the highway corridor, Limited to one to two bedrooms, all of those things. And I'm not sure, Patrick, as you've said before, Do we state all those things in? Do we go back to the drawing table? I'm not sure how we do that. We also need to make sure that the commercial is restricted. So Patrick, could you tell us how we need to proceed with this?
So I'm not sure what Commissioner Clements, your desire for the property is. And if we're not sure what your desire for the property is, I would recommend you table the application Until we can identify all of the issues and make sure they're properly addressed. That would be my recommendation. I don't know what the, what the, I don't know anything more about the current proposal Than what's shown on the site plan. So I'm a little, a little, little lost about how to help you achieve a goal That I don't know what the goal is.
I will say that there are still multiple issues That have not been addressed with the site plan. I would say that we understand that it is mixed-use, That zoning and advisory board has a recommended approval. And we want to support what the zoning advisory board has recommended, But we would like to see the applicant add some of the, Address some of the issues that are our concern, Which is the sidewalks, the mixed-use, restricting it to one and two bedrooms, adding sidewalks. So there's a lot of restrictions that we would like to see the applicant work out. A lot of issues that we would like to see the applicant work out. So if the applicant could come forward and advise if they, you know, want us to proceed Or if they're willing to table it. I don't want to just table it for them. They have to be willing to table it.
I can speak to that. This is Ray Crocker. Yes, I mean, we're willing to do the things that you're, That we need to do to fit into the community, to make this a success for everyone. And I think restricting the commercial, The mixed-use component is the commercial and the residential. And restricted of the commercial, we understand. We want that commercial area to be really neighborhood-scale commercial, So that it really serves the neighborhoods that are immediately there. And as far as the one and two bedrooms, absolutely. We would like to do one and two bedrooms. I think that would work there fine. We don't want to burden the school system at all, But we have statistics nationally on our one and two bedrooms, Communities that really show that you're really, As you market to the more professional renter in the area, You have limited school-aged children in these communities. You know, less than five percent of the total number of units. So we would see around seventeen school-aged children, Based on our national statistics, that would live in this community. So we're definitely willing to work with you guys. And if we need to table this and we can't put this into writing On those conditions that you're mentioning tonight, We can go back and work with you on those conditions. If they are the conditions that you're talking about, Yeah, we know there's a traffic study coming. We know there would be a turn lane needed, And we are willing to put those sidewalks in along with the commercial. So I think a list of conditions that you're mentioning Seem to be fine with us. I'm just not sure if we want to just list those.
Let's do this, Patrick. Let's have Stacy to read the conditions, All of the conditions that the zoning advisory board has listed as they have recommended. I know the applicant is asking for some changes, But let's read the restrictions as the DAB has recommended, And then we'll add to those conditions.
That's fine. Condition number one, "The uses of the subject property shall be limited To resort-style residential, hotel, no extended stay, Commercial, retail, and restaurant and office. The number of total dwelling units shall not exceed three hundred twenty-four Or a net density of sixteen dwelling units per acre, Whichever is the fewer number. Number two, "The development of dwelling units shall be limited To modern resort-style apartments located in interior corridors. The property shall be developed as a gated apartment community That shall be maintained and monitored at the property owner's expense. Number three, "An amenity package, which shall include a resort, An athletic-style swimming pool, A minimum three thousand seven hundred square-foot clubhouse, And at least one children's playground, Shall be provided to residents within the apartment community. Number four, "An apartment-community landscape plan Shall be submitted for approval by the building and planning review department, Which shall be substantially similar to that of the apartment community Known now or formerly as Canyon Springs. Number five, "Minimum five-foot-wide sidewalks shall be required All along the south side of the vehicular access From the apartment community to Mill Road. Number six, "A traffic impact study shall be required. An applicant shall work with the Henry County Department of Transportation To coordinate improvements. Number seven, "There shall be no direct access to Mill Road other than main access point. Number eight, "The site's access shall meet the minimum spacing requirements per the ULDC And should be located such that it meets the minimum intersection-site distance requirements Per the design speed limit of Mill Road. Number nine, "Property owners shall provide an interparcell access easement For vehicular and pedestrian..." for vehicular and pedestrian connection along the northern property line near the commercial area for future connectivity. Number 10, the owner or developer shall preserve right of way per the latest plan available, including if latest plan available is a concept plan plus any additional ULDC roadway requirements as determined applicable by the Henry County Department of Transportation as it relates to the improvement of Mill Road, including curb and gutter. Number 11, a minimum eight foot wide sidewalk shall be provided all along the subject property's Mill Road frontage. And number 12, all buildings shall be constructed of a mixture of at least two of the following on all sides, brick, stone and stucco.
So I would start with cementous, um, cementous cement on the, on number 12, that on the traffic study being required, that all of the improvements of the traffic study shall be completed before the CO is given to this building. So no one can move in until the traffic study requirements have been satisfied by the builder at the builder's expense. So that means if the traffic study says they need turning lanes, sidewalks, uh, traffic light, all of that has to be done at the builder's expense before a CO can be done. Apartments will be restricted to one and two bedrooms only. They're not allowed to have anything above a one or two bedroom. Let's say studios, one and two bedrooms. The applicant be, will be required to have garages at the apartment complexes so that the residents park inside of a garage. They must comply with the highway overlay corridor with street lights all along Mill Road in front of their property. Mill Road is dark and so the applicant must install street lights on Mill Road for the border of their property. What's the timeframe of the roundabout? I think that's a rocky question, but I would like for the roundabout, I think the roundabout should be completed before the COs. Patrick, can we restrict them not to get a CO until the roundabout is complete?
We can certainly impose that as a zoning condition.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
The roundabout where? I think we should, I'd specify exactly where this.
The roundabout at Mill and Mount Carmel. Madam Chair, I would like to motion for the approval with the conditions that Stacy has read with the, um, additional restrict, uh, conditions.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Holmes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next item on the agenda is the annexation AX-21-03. The city of McDonough requests an annexation of property located on Turner Church Road and Highway 155 North in Land Lot 71 and 72 of the 7th District. The property consists of 91.44 plus acres, District 3. Stacy?
Yes ma'am, Chair Harrell. Looking on the PowerPoint and also in your exhibits, this is 91.44 acres on the north side of Turner Church Road. This annexation request is for property that happens to be entirely owned by the city of McDonough. Staff has identified no apparent grounds for objection. And I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay. The city of Locust Grove, are there any questions? AX-21-04, the city of Locust Grove requests an annexation of property located on King Mill Court and Highway 42 and Land Lots 230, 250, 251 in the 7th District and Land Lots 246 of the 2nd District. The property consists of 195.9 plus acres, District 1. Stacy?
Yes ma'am, Chair Harrell. This location before you at this time is for property that's located just south of the King Mill Court area and that's to the west of the railroad tracks to the east of I-75 and north of the existing city limits of Locust Grove. The proposal apparently is to request to annex into the city of Locust Grove with their current zoning, which is a split zoning of both RA and M2. And staff has identified no apparent grounds for objection. I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Are there any questions?
Stacy? Is this along I-75?
Yes, sir, it is along I-75.
How far is it from the Norfolk Southern property?
Commissioner, this is the Norfolk Southern property.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Chair Harrell?
Yes.
My question may have to be answered later, but my question is, how would these annexation impact our current budget that we are proposing to pass? Is there something that we need to be aware of? Also, are there roads in this area on that 96 roads list that we need to take off due to these annexations that are taking place as well to make sure that we are using accounted dollars as wisely as possible? Could we please have those two things checked? And like I said, it's okay to have those answers at a later time.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. No further questions?
I have one more question.
Yes.
I know we had the, um, the presentation a couple of months ago from the Georgia Port Authority. Stacy, can you tell me is this, um, this annexation, does it have anything to do with the proposed inland port?
Commissioner, I am not the expert in that. As far as this Norfolk Southern property, what I seem to recall is that, that the, the message has been that this property is not intended to be an inland port and being annexed into the city, they're requesting to maintain the same zoning, which a portion is M2, uh, but the majority is RA, residential agricultural. For at least the next 12 months, if this is approved by the city council, it would need to maintain that same zoning of M2 and RA.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Clemens?
Stacy, what happens after 12 months? What's the extreme that the zoning can be after 12 months? Will we have any control of what it becomes after 12 months? Or would it, it can be anything that the city allows it to be?
So after 12 months, it's my understanding that the county no longer would have the ability to object. Henry County and the city of Locust Grove share a future land use map. The future land use map calls for a, an industrial land use. And so if the owner of the property requests a rezoning that's consistent with the industrial future land use map designation, which could be M1 or M2, it's very possible that the city would consider approving that. It's also possible that the city may consider changing the future land use map once this is in the city. But it's my understanding that for the, the next 12 months, it would need to maintain its current zoning.
Any additional questions?
Chair, what's the impact that it would have on the county if it's M1?
As far as the use of the subject property as M1, it appears that the access at this current time is through King Mill Court, which is that small cul-de-sac to the north and it tees into King Mill Road, which is within the Midlands Industrial Park. They could go either way. East would take you to Highway 42 and north would take you to Highway 155 at I-75, which is the way that one would go to access the interstate. To the south is the proposed, um, new interchange. And so going through the existing property within the city limits of Locust Grove, it would be possible to access Bethlehem Road. So as far as traffic impact goes, the, the biggest impact would be on Midlands Industrial Park and potentially Bethlehem. But at the same time, if, if that interchange is ever built, it seems like going south to Bethlehem would be, um, well accommodated.
If the interchange was built though?
Yes ma'am, correct.
And if the interchange is not built, will it dump that, that industrial traffic from the mixed use warehouses or whatever will go there? It'll dump it back into the red part of the land, which is, um, the subdivisions?
So looking on this future land use map, the subject property is located in the middle. Unfortunately, it's not highlighted. In this map, which is the actual zoning map, it is highlighted in yellow. So the city limits of Locust Grove is in green. The industrial area is in gray. The white shaded area is residential agricultural. The red stands for commercial and the pink stands for planned development. So this subject property is wedged in between I-75 and the railroad tracks. So as far as impacting neighbors, they've got Midland Industrial Park to the north, which is zoned M2. So they, they really wouldn't, in my estimation, have a big impact directly onto neighboring properties.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Now we're open for public comments. Stephanie, do we have anyone that wish to speak?
No, no, no public comments tonight.
Okay. As for approval of the minutes from March 9th, regular BLC meeting, call for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Wilson. Second by Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Our county manager comments on the Aquatic Center?
Yes, good evening Chair and members of the board. As a recurring agenda item, we do provide updates to the board as it pertains to the Aquatic Center. This evening, I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney who's going to provide an update on his conversation specifically with the city of Stockbridge Legal Council as it pertains to the IGA. I did receive from the property owner a survey of the 10 acre tract of land and I believe it was last week that I received that survey and I forwarded that on to our county attorney. We still need to have in hand a deed transferring the property over. And so I've made that request to the property owner and asked him for a hard date in terms of when I can expect to receive that. I do know that the board's approval of the Aquatic Center authorized 60 days to make it happen. And so looking at my calculation, 60 days from the date in which the board approved it, being the board approved it on March 9th, would be on May the 8th, which I believe is on the weekend. And so May 10th or that Friday prior to would be the deadline for that. As soon as I hear back from the property owner in terms of when we can expect that deed, I will share it with the board and then just provide guidance from that point forward. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney who will provide an update on the IGA with the city of Stockbridge.
Thank you, Sherri. So in accordance with the board's directions, I prepared a proposed intergovernmental agreement with the city of Stockbridge. That agreement essentially tracked verbatim the resolution that this board approved, designating the Jodico property as the Aquatic Center and listing the eight, 10, I believe it was seven conditions for approval, which included that the, uh, the, the city would waive impact fees, permit fees, the county would conduct inspections, et cetera. And that contract was sent to the city attorneys for review. They have provided, yesterday I received some comments and proposed revisions. I'm working through those now. They, does not appear to be any that are going to be big challenges. Once I'm able to work through and make recommendations, I will forward the updated IGA to both the county manager and to the board. And I think it'll, it'll be time at that point to bring it to the board for discussion and review and potentially approval. That could probably happen at the next board meeting, I expect. So the, the changes, the, the revisions that were made really were, were relatively minor and dealt primarily with the city. It actually affirmed our position, which is that this is a county project, not the city's. And a couple of the, the requirements or a couple of the revisions were the city sort of drawing further away from the Aquatic Center. One of them dealt with our desire that the county, as opposed to the city, conduct inspections and approvals. And the city made a, what I think is an appropriate point that they need to at least receive some confirmation, some certification from the county that the buildings and improvements are made in accordance with county ordinances. And I think, I do think that's an appropriate thing for the city to do since they're waiving their inspections. And we'll work on that language. Another one of the, the revisions was that the city would not be required to make any road improvements to accommodate the Aquatic Center. I don't believe that we have anticipated the city making any road improvements, but, but I'll confirm that with management. And otherwise, there were some, you know, relatively picky legal issues that we'll work through and that we'll have that available probably in the next couple of days to be distributed.
Thank you.
Chair Harrell, as it comes to the Aquatic Center, I did want to, and it's not on the agenda, but I did want to ask that the board review the correspondence that you sent out late this afternoon regarding the day of service, which is on May 15th, which is also the 200th anniversary for Henry County or at least the creation of Henry County. As the board probably knows by now, Chair Harrell has partnered with Chair Cobb with the Board of Education to identify a day of service in which we're asking the commissioners to designate at least two locations within your respective district that you'd like for us to clean up, spruce up and really make just a very nice area within your district. We're on a very tight timeline because we're looking at May 15th as the date and we want to make sure that we get the information out. So as soon as you are able to identify those two areas, if you just let me know so that we can make sure that we have enough individuals to participate. We are looking for volunteers, we're looking for citizens, we're going to have employees and we're hopeful that the commissioners will be able to join in as well as we kick off this day of service between not only the county and the Board of Education, but amongst our community as well and then officially kick off our 200th celebration for Henry County's creation. So if you have any specific questions regarding the request, please feel free to either email or call me. If you need to know of areas in which we get a lot of complaints through either See Click Fix or through our community service department, I'll be happy to share that information with you all. But I'm sure you are very familiar with your districts and you know where you're having litter and cleanup issues. So I just wanted you all to be aware of that. Other than that, Chair Harrell, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming meeting and events, May 4th is, uh, May 4th, 2021 regular BLC meeting, May 18th, 2021 regular BLC meeting. Budget hearings will be held at both of these regularly scheduled BLC meetings. There will also be a third public hearing by special call on May 4th at 9:00 a.m. These will be in-person meetings held in the administration building in the community room. Individuals will need to sign up via email by noon the day prior to the meeting if they would like to speak during the public hearing. Meeting is adjourned.